Okay, the time is six twenty. And I called to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the city of Glenwood Springs. This is our regular meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two here in the council chambers. We are available via Zoom with passcode one seven seven three six six. And the webinar ID with US phone number one seven one nine three five nine four five eight zero. And the webinar ID is eight two six two 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 seven zero six six one. And Louisa Police called the role.
Peter Waller. Amy Connerton. George Shaver.
Here.
Joy White. Amber Whissing. Carolyn Sipperly. Mitchell Wymer.
Thank you. Receipt of minutes, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Planning and Zoning Committee. Meeting notes or minutes. And I'll entertain a motion to regarding those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two for P and Z meeting.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Waller and a second from Commissioner Sipperly. Any discussion on those minutes? One thing I noticed was that made reference to the lady that spoke, once we were able to get her online, who was actually the applicant, that it was during the public comment period, but I think it was during the applicant's period of conversation. If I'm some minor detail, but I think that's a change that I would recommend. Anything else? We'll call the question.
Vote passed unanimously, sorry.
Okay. I'll open the floor to comments from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda. No one is in attendance here, so I don't know if anybody might still be with us online, if they ever were. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and move on to agenda item number five, which is new items, Planning File forty-one twenty-two Code Amendment to Municipal Code Section oh seven oh oh four five, Community Housing Standards and Guidelines, including but not limited to inclusionary zoning standards. And Watkins is here to present to us.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for raving the snowy roads out there to be here. As Chairman just mentioned, we are here to talk about planning file number forty-one dash twenty-two, amendments to the Development Code regarding the community housing standards and guidelines. This is proposed amendments to the Development Code, and so that would apply citywide in all zone districts. And it was instigated by a request from City Council. Inclusionary zoning, as you all know, are requirements that are placed on developers of projects that is kind of baked in affordability for projects that meet the threshold. And there are requirements about what affordability means and other things like that. The inclusionary zoning standards are common in many jurisdictions in Colorado. If I asked you all individually what your favorite places, cities and towns are in Colorado, I would bet that they would all, or most of them, would have inclusionary zoning standards. So it's very common practice. And in Glenwood, we've had inclusionary zoning standards since two thousand and one. They were suspended in two thousand and eleven at the height of the Great Recession, when not too much real estate development was happening, and they were repealed in two thousand and seventeen. And then, as you all may remember, in two thousand and twenty-one, we adopted a new set of inclusionary zoning requirements. And these are the first proposed amendments to them. So let's talk about the housing outlook and housing data for Glenwood Springs. Again, things that I think all of you know a lot about right now. We all know that housing is getting more expensive here, but to put some numbers on it, the current median condo purchase price is about five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, according to the statistical report from the Aspen Board of Realtors. The median single-family purchase price is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When you compare that to what we think an affordable home is for a family of four that's making the area median income, that's only about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And so, as you can see, that's a big gap that it leaves, whether that family is in the market for rental or the home product. Rental prices are a little bit harder to track. There's not always hard data that's available for that, but what we think is that many people are also getting priced out of the rental market as well. This is a table. You guys can read it. If not, I'll read some, share some important points from it. This one is from the most recent Regional Housing Study. And so I've highlighted Glenwood Springs' share of cost burdened households is forty-one percent of the total households in Glenwood, what was found in that study in two thousand and nineteen. As you can imagine, many of the households in the lower ranges, lower AMI ranges are more cost burdened than others. But even going up to the higher AMI ranges also sees some housing cost burden. And housing cost burden, by the way, means when families are having to pay thirty percent or more of their income on housing expenses. So this is obviously was an issue in two thousand and nineteen. We think it's an issue now that's getting worse. And other jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions around us also have inclusionary zoning that fairly closely mirrors what we're proposing here tonight. Carbondale's is very similar. Their threshold for when inclusionary zoning applies is five units. And twenty percent of the units in a residential project at which they apply would have to be cost restricted. Aspen and Vail do it a little bit differently. They do their restrictions by floor area rather than by unit numbers. Aspen requires thirty percent of floor area to be cost restricted and Vail ten percent. It's important to note also that many of these other places have other programs and incentives on top of these inclusionary zoning standards. So specifically tonight, we're talking about changing threshold at which inclusionary zoning standards take hold from ten units to five units. So if you all were to recommend this and the City Council were to adopt this, five, a residential project with five units, this would apply to, rather than the ten-unit threshold that exists right now. And we're also recommending that twenty percent of the units at which these regulations apply would be cost restricted. So that's an increase from ten percent to twenty percent. Most of these changes are in Section oh seven oh oh four five oh seven oh in the Development Code. We also wanted to note that there's another section in the applicability section that's oh seven oh oh four four five oh three oh that would also be changed if this were to come to fruition. So to give you some more kind of specific examples of what this would look like, I have a couple of tables. You can see that when we change the threshold and change the cost restriction requirement tonight, that obviously results in more affordable housing units. That's what the goal is. And it takes effect at nine units. Versus to get to the two-unit threshold of having two affordable housing units, a project would only have to have nine units, at which this would apply under the proposal. Whereas it would have to be eighteen units for the, under the current scheme. So we have done public notice in the newspaper and obviously published this agenda. We know that's not a whole lot of public outreach, but we have not received any public comment at this time. And so to give you guys a summary of what we're looking for today, again, this is consideration of revisions to the Development Code, Chapter seventy, Section forty-five Affordable and Workforce Housing. And staff is recommending approval of it with the findings listed in the staff report on page five. And I'm also going to go through those here and here with you all in a minute. So your options tonight are to recommend approval to City Council, who is the deciding body on this. They would, if they wanted to adopt it, they would adopt an ordinance over two readings. You could recommend this to the City Council with conditions. You could recommend denial to City Council, or you could continue this. And so now I'm going to go through with you the criteria for approval. These five criteria come from our Development Code, and you are obviously free to come up with your own findings, but we have some suggested ones. What I'm going to share with you on the screen is basically what you have in the packet. I'm just going to go through it in a little bit more detail. So the first criteria for approval is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other city policies. We believe that they are. Second finding, or the second criteria, is that the proposed amendment does not conflict with other provisions of this code or other provisions of Glenwood Springs Municipal Code, and we don't think it does there. Finally, that, or finally, the third one is that it is necessary to address a demonstrated community need. And I think it's pretty clear that housing is a community need. Housing units, shortfalls that were identified in the most recent housing study are real, and we think they're increasing. Fourth criteria would need to be met is that the proposed amendment is necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and/or policy. And so we bring up again that there have been purchase price increases that have been pretty substantial over the last year and two years. And the last criteria that would need to be satisfied is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code, which we think it is. We find no conflict. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you all have. I also wanted to share some sources that we have here. And thank you for your time.
Great, thanks, Watkins. Ms. Connerton.
Thank you. This is a great presentation. I appreciated the report. I do have one question, and I probably could have looked, but I'd just like to hear it from, like, staff's opinion of how this does align with the comprehensive plan, if you don't mind just giving me a really brief summation of that.
Sure. I think there, we didn't obviously do a full analysis in providing specific goals that we need. But the code is pretty, or the comprehensive plan, I think is pretty clear that it does support it. It has action, goal, actions, items and goals, you know, such as increased supply of affordable housing, which is very much the purpose of what this is. Increase the supply of affordable housing specifically for families, which this also can do, I think. So it's, the code is pretty, or sorry, the comprehensive.
Yeah, I think it's important to, just for people to hear that piece, so that's, thank you.
Joy, please.
So I am definitely excited about more affordable housing. I guess one of my concerns is with, with there being an adjustment to the amount of units or the requirement affecting the smaller amount of units. It just seems like that may burden some of the local builders or people that are developing in town. And I'm wondering if there's any module out there where there's like a tiered approach to affordable housing, where, say, a higher density unit would maybe ramp up in the percentage that they're required to provide towards affordable housing, because as a local, I would rather see the large investor who's coming and building and developing, you know, all these multifamily units. I would rather see them burdened as opposed to some of our local people that are just, you know, building smaller projects and developing smaller projects here. So I'm wondering if there is any sort of module out there in Colorado communities that kind of are a tiered approach.
Well, it's a great comment. And to answer your question, I'm not aware of any that do that. I will say that a lot of the projects that come to us do not meet the current, the ten-unit threshold, which is what it is currently. And so adjusting it to that five-unit threshold would capture more projects, would increase the amount of affordable housing, because more projects would be subject to it. And so that's kind of the rationale there, but that's a great point.
I've kind of similar question, not necessarily on the numbers, but it seems like one of the things that in my short time of being on P and Z, we don't see many for sale. Everything's rentals, you know, that we see. So, so I was wondering, a thought I just had, and I don't know, they talked about this in the housing group, but to see if you can incentivize for-for-sale projects and maybe keep those the same at ten percent and ten units or whatever, and for rent, maybe put this in for rental projects, because, you know, we're, I mean, I can't even think of seeing a for-sale, I guess, the rivers. There's been a few, but but really not very many, probably a very low percentage of the number of units we see. So I guess a comment that I would just have would be, it would be interesting to just look at that, to throw that out as a proposal for, to try to incentivize for-sale units. Anyway, that was one comment.
Could you elaborate on that a little further, meaning that you would want a for-sale project not have a requirement to provide?
No, 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 I'm saying that for-sale projects, it stays the same as what it is. You know, it stays at the percentages. It doesn't go to the higher, to the higher percentage and for more units, you know, kind of like what Joy was talking about. So you'd have, that's, it's not a tiered thing, but it's just two different kinds of projects. And if someone says they're going to be doing blah, 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 and then they do something else, then it, then they have to go to the higher or to the correct number, depending on if they're for sale or for rent. Anyway, that was one comment I had. And then another one I had is that, you know, so, so we're looking, when we look at other municipalities, we look at, we throw ourselves in with the rich people, you know, Carbondale, Aspen, Vail, and it would be interesting to sandwich this in with Newcastle, you know, because I guess one thought that I have is being a past developer is, you know, so, you know, do you get priced out of doing your projects, kind of to Joy's thing? So then you go to Newcastle, and they have more land, you know, up in Castle Valley and up in that area. And so it would be interesting to just see what are their, what's their development or their affordable, their affordable housing criteria, that sort of thing. And, you know, do we drive smaller projects of people then to go to Newcastle or someplace where they can afford it? Maybe that's good, you know, maybe we're good with that or not with that, I don't know. But, I mean, I, you know, I kind of lived through the Great Recession or whatever it was, the oh-eight horrible times. And, you know, I remember when they, when they took the housing thing down, and a lot of that was trying to stimulate people to build and people to do, to just get any housing. And it probably went on too long. And, you know, I don't know if that's right or wrong and whatever sort of thing, but, you know, Newcastle might, might be a place where they build more housing and maybe people in our community like that. And then what that does is drive our prices of housing up even more, because we have less supply. Anyway, that's just, those are my two kind of comments there.
Thanks, Pete. I think Amy was a student.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is. Well, Pete kind of touched a little bit on what I was thinking was about the for-sale thing. But also, I mean, it, I mean, just kind of the antithesis just a little bit, because it seems like when they're building places here, how much more, like, five units is what there's room for. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of room for more expansive development. So it makes sense to say it's at five and, you know, five units. And that was kind of like one of my thoughts, you know, because there's not going to be a lot more, it doesn't seem like of, like, they will go to Newcastle and things like that, but it is interesting. I mean, I see Carbondale, they're building up like crazy, but they do have that restriction. And I have friends who are actually getting places to live, and they're closer to where they work. They're, you know, life is better for them. They have less commute. And, you know, and no one's really, like, no developers going, no, 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 kicking down the door, saying this is a bad idea. It's more of a comment.
Michelle, please.
Yes, Watkins, thank you. This was good, man. On page, I have, I have a few questions here. So on page six, on the top of page six, you talk about median price for single-family home at eight fifty. Do you know where that number came from?
Yes, that was from the, one of the statistical reports from Aspen Board of Realtors. And so that, what that is, is year-to-date through October, which is the most recently available, not the month of October, but.
Of sales or of listings, do you know?
Of sales.
Of sales, okay.
Yeah.
Because that, that number seemed super high to me, and I did, I did a little bit of research, and I wasn't getting anything close. Does it seem right to you guys? I might be putting my house up for sale. Okay. This is, this is, this is for rentals, right, strictly for rentals? This, 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 this scheme, or is this for con, sale, sales of condos as well?
And are you asking about the?
No, I'm sorry, I've moved on. The deed restrictions for AMI, is this rentals only?
No, so as proposed, it would apply to any new real estate development.
Okay.
So whether that's rental, for sale, whatever.
Okay. Is there, is there rent control mechanisms in Glenwood Springs?
Not strictly speaking. Rent control is not legal in Colorado. I couldn't quote you the statute or tell you what it is. You know, that, that the rent control that we have is through deed restriction. And so that would be, that would be the enforcement mechanism of.
How does this get managed moving forward, right? So I can see that that first sort of batch of, hey, we've got all these apartments for, say, or for rent, here's the, here's the block of affordable ones, right? Leases come and go and expire. What's to prevent us losing track that that was a block for, for lower AMI?
And it absolutely does require tracking.
Who does that now, if anyone?
We have recently transitioned to using the Garfield County Housing Authority. We have a contract with them and are anticipating doing more work with them in the future. And so they, they do that. We have done it in the past, just for the voluntary units, because as the memo mentioned, none of the affordable units created through inclusionary have been built yet. But they will, they will be done the same way as our voluntary units are tracked.
Is that just sort of, somebody has a spreadsheet, and we're keeping an eye as new apartments come on, or as, as apartments become open and available to rent, and they're sort of just, or what's, do you know how that process works?
Sure, sure, yeah. So at the end of every year, the owners are supposed to give us affidavits from the renters, if it's a renter. And so that, that affidavit signed by the renter says, this is what I paid for it. We checked, we checked to make sure that it's under what they're allowed to charge. So it's signed by them. I know that's not a perfect system. People have pointed that out before. But we haven't, haven't had any complaints about it not working.
And then, and then are there mechanisms for renters to come to some sort of authority with complaints that maybe the, you know, they're, they're being priced out when they were supposed to have been protected? I guess, and then the flip side of that is sort of recognizing that, that I think AMI is probably a bit of a moving target, right? That what it is this year, or what it is next year is not, what it's going to be next year is not, right? So there's always sort of this, you know, kind of, kind of, you know, your rent's going up by X percent a year, and that's totally within the bounds of things. It's just, I'm just, I'm curious how like the logistics of this and being supported, you know, sort of ongoing.
Yeah, so your, your first question about enforcement of it. Today, we haven't dealt with this, fortunately, not dealt with this at all. But if we got a call, I would, I would hope that would be the first call they would make, either to Garfield County Housing Authority or to us. And we would immediately get in touch with the renters, point to that thing that they signed and was recorded, so anyone can look it up and say you can't do that.
It would be, it would be nice, and I'm not tacking this onto anything, but it would be nice to have. So, so before here, I'm a Colorado native, but I lived in Jersey for quite a while. And, and I had renters, and I was required by law to give them information, right? As renters, kind of, it was the Renters Bill of Rights, and it was, here's the phone numbers to call when your landlord, you know, doesn't turn the heat on, et cetera, et cetera. It would be really cool, I think, for us to be able to provide our renters with some level of of a backstop, right? That here's, we're here to support this process, right? If you feel like you're being taken advantage of, or something just doesn't seem right, here's the number to call. Or here are your, here are your options for, you know, for, for support or answers or some sort of thing. I think that's just a little, a little note maybe on, on down the road, but.
If I may?
Yeah.
So we do contract with Garfield County Housing Authority, which is a jurisdiction that also manages other housing guidelines within the valley. They actually managed City of Glenwood Springs program previously when we had inclusionary zoning on the books. And they have fairly stringent reporting requirements that happen throughout the year. It's not just a reporting period at the end. That's actually for our voluntary program that they have a reporting period. Our inclusionary zoning program does work a little bit differently. And when any renter signs a lease, they have to report to Garfield County Housing Authority for approval. So there's a little bit more checking with this program that's ongoing. And Garfield County Housing Authority has been doing this a very, very long time and is a trusted consultant. And they also work closely with staff, as staff has the lovely task of making sure that they're updated with all the units that are coming online, so that Garfield County Housing Authority can interface with the developer, be that main point of contact. But I, I am interested in your comment regarding information, because if the tenants themselves don't have the information, then that can be problematic. I know Garfield County Housing Authority, in their implementation of these programs, also does random checks with the tenants to make sure that everything is being abided by on that side as well. checks with the tenants to make sure that everything is being abided by on that side as well.
Okay.
Hannah, what's a great comment. And with the for sale products also, there are a lot, quite a lot of checks and the process is very spelled out.
Yeah. I would just hope that all of our renters here in town know what, know, know where and how the law is on their side, right? And, and what they can do when they feel like they're being taken advantage of or something just isn't right, you know? And then, and then my last question and I'll stop, I'm sorry, but um, I'm, I'm more of a, just philosophically more of a proponent of carrots versus sticks. And I think that us saying that a certain percentage of your project, you know, needs to be this and that, that feels like a stick to me. Do we have any history or any experience with the carrot side of that, which would be to provide these developers with incentives? When they choose to provide a certain percentage of their product is, as affordable or as de-restricted, that you must live and work here, et cetera, et cetera. Are there incentives that we've talked about, thought about, played around with that, that we can talk to?
There are some incentives that we have in our code and our, our housing guidelines. When people want to make a, a, a new unit affordable, but, but are not required to, they can enter our voluntary program. And so that's a way for them to get their system improvement fees waived. And so that can be, that, that can be a hefty fee depending on the number of units and so on about it. We, we have some other things on the books that, that we're allowed to do that are a little bit more untested. We just haven't, they're newer and we haven't had the opportunity to, to use them yet. We have the ability to provide bonus, density bonuses and other kind of flexibility measures.
Do you feel Watkins, that there's some potential for us to explore additional incentives to, to accomplish what it is we're trying to do here?
It, it's hard to say. It's something that we, we're looking into right now. Because we're in the process of updating our strategic housing plan, which goes back to 2010. So we're, we're working with consultants on doing that right now and are exploring what other places are doing in terms of incentives. You know, it, it's kind of hard. We, we, if you have ideas, we're happy to talk about it. And I, we do recognize that it's a sticks approach rather than carrot. Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Carolyn.
Thanks. I'm glad you asked about management. That was one of the concerns that I had and will it be a burden on the city? But I have faith that since Garfield County has done this a whole lot in the past, I think they, they probably have a pretty good grip on it. And, and our staff trust them. So there's that question. I agree with Commissioner Waller in incentivizing the construction of for sale units. We've had like a thousand new rentals come into town in the last few years and very few new for sale housing opportunities. And perhaps this could be a tool that would help us get more units that people can actually experience homeownership. One question I had was about the AMI and does that include utilities? I mean, utility fees and rates are going way up and is that rolled into the thirty percent of your income being affordable or are utilities going to be sort of on top of that? Or is there any consistency with how that's applied?
Hannah, correct me if I'm wrong, I do not think utilities are included.
That's a great question. I know in our voluntary program, on the reporting side, utilities is supposed to be an allowance within that affordability level. But in thinking about the housing guidelines, which is the implementation factor of our inclusionary zoning, I would have to double check and I'll try and do so right now, but I do not believe so. I think Watkins.
Because that amount could easily put it over the acceptable AMI.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, even if you just have to water a yard, it can be very expensive. One other concern that I have with the proposed policy is that we know that developers will use the free market housing to sort of subsidize the units that are deed restricted. And I'm kind of concerned that that's going to encourage more large developments, whereas developments of the five units might keep our neighborhood sort of flavor as opposed to seeing these giant sort of Six Canyon things going up. And you know, along the lines of what Joy was saying, we don't want to discourage our local developers from doing projects. And the big bucks guys are the ones who might be coming in and can put in more units and can afford to take the loss of the affordable ones. Is that, have you thought about that? Have, is there any evidence of this happening in other jurisdictions and have you got ideas on what we can do about it?
I think that makes sense logically. I do. You know, the, the principles that we, that, that we like to stick to are that density, density helps cities kind of be, it, it helps in lots of ways. It helps places become more walkable. It helps businesses thrive. So there's reasons why we like density, but, but I do understand what you're saying and that's, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, it could be sort of discouraging infill development, which is something we're trying to encourage, you know, on smaller lots in town. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I don't know who was next.
I'll go next.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm just curious if through your work with the Garfield County Housing Authority, do you know if, when people exceed the rent, the, the income guidelines? If they're somehow kicked out of their rental unit or how that plays out?
So you're asking if, if, when the, if the renters exceeded the income capacity? That, that's a good question and how they would do that. Obviously they wouldn't qualify if they, if it was that way initially.
Because it could be something like I got married and now we're a double income.
Sure.
You got a raise.
Yeah, which is a great thing, right?
And we don't necessarily want to penalize people first.
First, the housing authority was here. I have gone through the process, by the way, with the housing authority. When I first, when I was looking at a house, I had to fill out a lot of documentation. And I was told specifically that if my income did change, it does change yours, what you can be inside of, what you can live in. And so, you know, because it, that's what the whole purpose is of the deed restriction is to, you know. I have to every year, well, not me, but every year you have to submit documentation to show your income.
Like your tax form?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
I'll just interject here. So every program is a little bit different. And our housing guidelines are actually not set up that way. So we do not have a recurring qualification status.
Okay.
Only initial. So you would not be kicked out if your income changed under the program as of right now. And each deed restriction is different across the board. Carbondale's are different. Ours are different.
Yeah.
So that varies with the specific municipalities' housing guidelines. And as our housing guidelines are written right now as approved by city council, that is not a component.
You mean for the city?
For our.
For ours.
Units that we're talking about tonight. Yes.
Right.
And Hannah, I don't, or sorry Watkins, I don't recall. Do we have any sort of code language that specifies that we want to give preferential treatment towards people who are working in the city limits? I don't recall. As it, as the program stands.
Yes, we, we do, right Hannah? That's one of the, the priority guidelines is people who work here.
And then it's like another tier of like twenty miles away or something like that. And then the other question I have, and I know Legal's not here, but even a for rent unit, and this kind of just goes to your point, like we're not going to lose the units because these deed restricted properties have recorded deeds or recorded covenants that go with their deed, correct?
It's actually not the covenants. A deed restriction is recorded with Garfield County. So it would pull up in any title search if a property was to sell. And then obviously the rental properties, they have a deed restriction recorded for the entire property.
Okay.
So it's, it's recorded in perpetuity. And so anyone looking up information on the property would find that very quickly.
Right. So to my point, the units aren't going to get lost. Yep.
But they do take management.
Correct.
The deed restriction, is that usually the, I'll see, you know, is it, are, are they specific units that are sort of flagged as, you know, the, the affordable? Or is it just, or, or does that float around or?
That's a, that's a good question. And we've been talking about that a bit lately. And I think we've landed on we want specific units to be, to be the beneficiaries of that because it's easier to track.
It's easier to track and, and it, it might prevent some unscrupulous, you know, owner or landlord from saying, gosh, unit number six is now the, you know, the last renters really did a number on that place. It's not so great anymore. I think I'm going to make that one my affordable, you know, unit. Just because it's in, it's in disrepair a bit. So I think tagging it on that units one and two are going to be the affordable ones. I think that's, that feels like the right thing to do.
Right. And in our housing guidelines, we, we have requirements that they, that in your example, if units, units one and two, they need to be similar to the makeup of the rest of the units. They can't be one bedrooms where all the rest of them are three bedrooms.
Pete?
I guess I'd like to support what both Carolyn and Joy said on, on, I guess I, I like having the smaller projects and keeping the number at ten. And you know, because when, when someone's building something, you know, you have to make it price out for you to make it work. So, so if you have, if you have to do the inclusionary or the affordable housing units, then, then you raise the prices of everything of your other free market things, whether it's free market rental or free market for sale. So I mean, it, it, it seems like to, to get just that small number from, from the small developer that's doing the small project, you're, you're penalizing the general public for the small number of units versus, you know, something that's twenty units or a larger number. It seems like it's not as big of a deal. So anyway, that's just one comment that I would have on that. And then, then a question I have, and I, I kind of forget this from the projects that I've done, but is, is there any, you know, you were talking about incentives on, on fees, city fees and that sort of thing. So for, for the twenty percent, are, are there any incentives on that? Or is that, that's just all fire fees, city, you know, school fees, et cetera, all of the, all of the typical fees for all of these affordable housing?
Yes, these, these fees would also have to be paid for the affordable.
So there's no, there's no incentive on those. That's just, this is just your penance.
On the inclusionary side, we have incentives that Watkins mentioned, the density bonus and also some site flexibility that's included in our code. But for the inclusionary zoning units, they do not get the fee waiver incentive. Fee waves, fees are only waived if it's a voluntary. So if a developer were to go above their, let's say their twenty percent requirement and deed restrict more units to a hundred percent AMI, the city has agreed to waive fees for those units.
Right.
So the inclusionary zoning units have some incentive, but not to the greater extent of fee waivers. But site flexibility and density bonus, though no one has taken us up on the offer yet, could be very beneficial if a project is having trouble penciling out.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Carolyn.
I would be interested in hearing more about how the density bonus could be applied and what type of incentive it is. Like, does it mean, obviously if you put six units where you could have only put five, then you're still in a pickle with the inclusionary zoning. So it is, does it apply to lot coverage? How do, how do you, what is the density bonus?
It's one of the specific items that we're going to get some ideas and analysis from, from our, our consultants as we're doing this plan update. So I don't have a lot of details about how that could work right now, that it's a, it's a concept that's out there. Potentially available. Do you want to add anything Hannah?
Sure. And I think what might be helpful here, I'm realizing, is if you guys read through the housing guidelines themselves, because all of, some of these finer details, like how this program is implemented very specifically, is included in this document that's not in code. So I think maybe afterwards, we can make sure that Planning and Zoning Commission has a copy of the housing guidelines. So I'll read to you, if you will, the section on density bonus. As I've mentioned, in Watkins City as well, we haven't had anyone utilize this incentive yet. So density bonus, as part of any new residential or mixed use development, the city may offer a density bonus. Developments proposed in a residential zone shall be limited to one additional unit than the zoning would otherwise allow. So there's a limit there in residential zones that you would, the density bonus can only give you one more unit than you would have been allowed to do. And in the commercial side, it's a building height flexibility. So you would be able to go up one additional story. And then we have site design flexibility, which may consider flexible application of design standards, including minimum lot size, building height, lot coverage, impervious coverage, setbacks and landscaping. Parking requirements shall not be included in the flexible consideration. Let me make that last one very clear. So that's what's in our housing guidelines currently as available to anyone who had, who has units in the inclusionary zoning requirement.
So if this were to be approved tonight and you were planning, your, your lot allowed for four units, you could get a density bonus, then you get five units, but then one has to be deed restricted. So you've kind of got a step ahead, but then a half a step back. Or am I reading that incorrectly?
Yeah. So if you wanted to have, if you wanted to have four units, you would not be required to, to build any affordable housing.
Right.
So that fifth unit wouldn't be a bonus unit. It would, it would be the one affordable.
So you would only get the density bonus if you voluntarily put a deed restriction? No.
So, and this is a very interesting question, Carolyn. Thank you for posing this.
I'm sorry, I asked the worst.
You know, that's why I was like, let me try and think through this in my brain. I think I could see Watkins was doing the exact same thing. And, and Watkins is correct. So you can't access the density bonus until you have a unit that's required. This is part of the required incentives. So you need to have a project that's at five units. Well, the proposal for tonight, currently you need to have a project that's ten units and we're requiring you to have one affordable unit. Then you'd be able to access the density bonus. So that's an interesting question as far as like, you know, kind of chicken and the egg. But currently, if you have nine units, if you're proposing a nine unit project, you don't, you're not triggering inclusionary zoning. So you also don't get the possible incentives of an additional unit. You'd have to actually be proposing ten. And if that was the limitation, you'd get to have eleven, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but if, so if you are, if we pass this tonight and you're building a five plex, one of them needs to be deed restricted, then you're eligible for density bonuses? Because from what you said before, I thought the density bonuses and the other fee waivers were for the voluntary program. No?
The fee waivers are for the voluntary program.
Okay.
These incentives, which I just read to you, are for the inclusionary zoning. So inclusionary zoning, which is, if you think about it, one is regulatory, the stick. And one is the carrot, which is an incentive. So our voluntary program, and that's why it's voluntary. We're going to give you a benefit because out of the goodness of your heart, you are deed restricting and, and keeping the rent at a certain level. So fees are waived for that.
Okay.
The, if you're required to provide units under inclusionary zoning, fees are not waived. But there is this possibility of a density bonus or some site design flexibility.
Okay. You at least get a little bit of, you know, a little bit of a gift if you're stuck with the program.
But no one has taken our gift yet.
And the other comment that I had is, is a concern about not reviewing income annually. You know, if I wanted to move to Glenwood Springs and I just go take a job at Wendy's, I get into a house and then I go get a professional job. And man, I'm making some money now. That's kind of a concern. I mean, my own income has changed drastically in the last few years and I know it's a real possibility here. And I'm worried that we will be assisting folks who don't need it. You know, even if the income has just barely gone across the line, it, you know, it's definitely tough to ask someone to leave their home. But obviously if their income has gone up, someone else with a much lower income and who is struggling might be more entitled to that residence. So how do we, how do we deal with that? might be more entitled to that residence. So how do we, how do we deal with that? Do we make an annual, just submit all of income? Or, you know, do people verify employers? Do you have to check bank accounts? You know, I, I could see this getting really complicated.
Yeah, I think to achieve what you're asking for, it requires some amendments to our housing guidelines. Yeah, and, and that, that's probably what it would have to be. If you, you know, you consider someone who takes a, takes a low-paying job and then, and then starts making more and more money. Sometimes what happens with those people is that they want to move on to a bigger and nicer place. And so they would, they would be leaving that, that place and the next person would have to qualify. So that's something to think about too.
Or they could be in college, working part-time, paying for school, and eligible, then they get their degree, then they can be employed at a higher rate. And it's very likely to happen.
I believe there is a number, a working requirement, number of hours also, though. So.
Hours of work?
Yeah. And it's, I, I believe it comes out to about thirty hours a week. Be mistaken, but I think that's what it averages out over the years.
Thanks.
Joy.
So because I sell real estate, I'm often talking to you guys about lot size, zoning, and, you know, highest and best use of a lot. And a lot of times, it seems like if you have maybe a quarter of an acre in town, you can build up to five to six units or so. Has staff or city council contemplated making the number seven as opposed to five? Which I think would maybe protect some of those smaller investors in town, but would also get us to where we want to be with affordable housing. Because you would need to have a larger footprint, you know, to build the seven-unit complex versus the five unit. I don't know. It just seems like it might accomplish something like what we're talking about, protecting those smaller developers and maybe having the, the larger parcels and those larger multifamily units kind of carry the burden.
We have, have not considered seven units. If that's what you all, as the P and Z decides to do tonight, that's within your, your authority to make that motion.
Where did seven come from?
Yeah.
Versus ten.
I mean, just, just because of the lot size and maybe, maybe Hannah can.
Do the math.
I, just to get it away from that five to where it's not so punitive for the smaller people who have, you know, like, I had a quarter acre and, and I was told, you know, if it met setbacks, I could add five to six units potentially. I've had other clients who could do that. And, and again, they're just people who are small, local landowners that are trying to develop versus these bigger.
I'm just wondering where it could be, six or eight or.
Right, right, right.
Never mind.
I mean, I, it seems like ten percent and twenty percent, like, I think you're trying to just stick to those numbers. But like, I'm, what's interesting to me is what you guys wrote on page seven. You know, because it looks like there's twenty-three, none of them constructed, units that were deed restricted. And, and this is an opportunity to like, really, maybe, I, I don't know, I want to, I don't want to use the word incentivize, but, you know, have the opportunity to actually create some deed restricted units. You know, because that might, we, we might not have the same opportunity. But it's like, if there's, it, what's the difference between five and ten, really? Because if, if you've got ten units that you can build in a place, you can do nine so that you don't have to have that deed restriction. It's the same thing with like five. You can do four, so you don't have to have that deed restriction. I just feel like between five and ten, those are small developers. I don't feel like those are big developers. But it's, those are comments. But yeah, and I guess I would have to understand, like, seven, you know what I mean, more so, or like.
It just gets you past that really, really small group of people that have lots that are large enough, but not giant parcels to develop. But, but it's very, very, a very singular comment, so I understand that.
I might suggest, as we seem to be getting into discussion, which you guys will absolutely be doing, perhaps opening it up to public comment to see if there's anyone that wants to speak to this and then returning to council discussion, excuse me, commission discussion.
Okay. We will open it up to public comment on this planning item. Oh, I know, haven't noticed the on-air. Man, that's just like, it's like Studio B.
So there's no one out in Zoom land?
No one in Zoom land and no one in, in our presence, so we'll close that and return it back to.
I do want to just make one more comment, Joy, to your five, six, seven. In the proposal, the proposed regulations, it's the same. Whether it's five, six, or seven, it's still one of those units has to be, I guess, a deed restricted. You know what I mean? Like, if you look at page eight.
No, I understand. I'm saying the threshold would be seven as opposed to five.
Yeah, 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 I see.
So they'd still be required to do one unit?
Whether they were five or seven.
No, she's.
I'm saying.
The number is seven instead of five.
Yeah, it would be seven instead of five.
Or just get rid of five altogether?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but if the twenty percent applies to seven, that's one point four. And the language said that if it's point seven-five or less, then it rounds down. So it would be one unit and seven instead of one and five.
Correct. Yeah.
Mitchell.
Yes, so I think this is probably my closing sort of wrap-up thought here.
As much right.
In the discussion.
This is.
Continue.
Are we in the discussion period?
Yes.
Okay, so I am. I'm, so I am going to, I am going to vote to not support this, this proposal. I think for, for a lot of the reasons that we've, we've surfaced here. I think just the way that we're, we're not there yet in the way that it's written. I feel like it, as it's, as it's stated now, it's, 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 it's complicated. It's, it's onerous to manage. I think we've already uncovered a few loopholes. There's probably others out there that we've not yet uncovered. And ultimately, I think it's counterproductive to what, what it is that we're trying to, to accomplish. So, so, you know, if, if, if we all kind of, kind of vote no on this tonight, you know, it, it, it goes back to staff. And I think from there, you know, perhaps we, we amend the housing guidelines first. That seems to be like a, like a, maybe kind of a logical kind of first thing to sort of figure out so that, so that we can, you know, be, be much more integrated in, in kind of the, the changes into, into the current, into the current language there. And then we can reflect those changes in code as, as, in as much as we need to. And then, and then Watkins, I have spent, you know, the last fifteen minutes thinking about incentives. I don't know if these are even great sort of ideas. But, you know, there, there's the potential for, for some tax breaks, I think. You know, perhaps ongoing, you know, ten-year, you know, tax breaks. If we're, you know, voluntarily, you know, going, you know, providing, you know, AMI deed restricted product in the market. And then, and then even something as simple as just they get priority planning as they move through this process, right? That it's not a six-month wait, but no, you're, you're doing what it is we want you to do. We're gonna, we're gonna push you to the, to the front of the line through the, through the whole, the whole approval process. So, and, and that's, you know, if those are great ideas or bad ideas, I'm sure there's, there's others out there that we could, we could figure out. But that's, that's certainly my, my position tonight. And I would ask my fellow commissioners to, 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 to likewise not approve as it's written tonight.
So, if I could, if I could respond to that, I, I like where you're coming from, Commissioner Wymer. One, one thing, though, is that regardless of how you all vote tonight, this, this will go to city council. So you, you could, you could vote to recommend denial, but city council has the, so it will still go to them.
Or we could continue.
If we continue, does council review it anyway?
No, it would stay with you all.
Since Legal's not here, I'll put on my legal hat. So I would encourage you, if you are uncomfortable with what's presented to you tonight, to talk it out right now and try and arrive at some of the recommendations you do want, so that staff can take those to council to get a program that you are comfortable with. You can always approve, deny, or continue. That is your right as Planning and Zoning Commission. But to turn it back to staff, and staff has done quite a bit of work on the inclusionary zoning program. We would be sitting around until the next meeting, wanting to hear what you actually do want. So I would encourage you in this discussion. I think you've been doing a great job of it so far. Lovely ideas. I can't believe you just sat there and thought of those right now. But so if you have more ideas on how you think this program could better work, that would be beneficial for staff to be able to go then to city council and say, P and Z did the work on this. Here's their recommendations. And then they have the discussion. But you do have the option to continue, yes.
Joy.
So regardless, this goes to council in a couple of weeks or January or?
It is currently thought that it would be on the January fifth meeting. But that's only if you make a recommendation. If you continue because you need more information, it would come back to you.
For me, the conundrum is, you know, in a year of, I think, what was a heavily, just a heavy development year, I think we saw definitely under five. But I can only remember one project that was up to ten units. And, and, and I may be wrong, but there, there was a substantial number of applications that were far over that. And to me, it seems more beneficial to increase the percentage that we're requiring for those larger scale units than it is to require, require this for smaller projects. And, and because, again, we would have had far more units with those larger scale projects than the one or so applications that we saw with the ten or under.
So a sliding scale.
Yeah, yeah.
So like for twenty?
Yes.
What do you think should be appropriate for a twenty developed, like, unit?
Well, I'm just curious, you know, Aspen and Vale have a very robust affordable housing program. And so I'm wondering if the, the square footage or that module, what is the benefit to having that module as opposed to a percentage module?
Well, don't they get, the bigger that they want their house, they have to somehow contribute to some affordable unit somewhere or something or?
It would only apply, as I understand it, it would only apply to multifamily units, not just.
Compare ourselves to Aspen. To me, it seems crazy. I mean, we're Glenwood.
Totally. I agree.
I mean, Carbondale makes more sense. It seems like a rim between Carbondale and Newcastle.
Yeah, how do we make the rich people pay for our affordable housing?
That's the question.
For people to live here, to work here.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do this.
Yeah, totally.
Right.
Not for, but anyway, sorry.
No, 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 and that, that's, I guess, that was my initial thought is like, can it be tiered? Can we make it more onerous for people that are building, you know, these large-scale projects and require more of them?
So it would be, and I guess I'm just thinking of, okay, so five, six, seven units is twenty percent. And then you get to ten, and are you talking thirty percent? And then twenty, are you talking forty percent?
No.
Because that would be like a sliding scale, because like right now, it's everybody's getting the same thing at twenty percent, right? So like, if you build twenty units, you get, you have to give four. Four of your units in a twenty-unit build has to be affordable housing. Whereas with five, six, seven, it's one. Eight, nine, ten, it's two, and et cetera. You know what I mean? That's everybody getting twenty percent.
And I understand.
No, I know. I, I'm not trying to like saying no. I'm just.
No, I know, but we just had, you know, three hundred units go in above lows. And to me, we're much better served focusing on those projects. And, and, you know, to your point, maybe there won't be many of those coming in. I don't know. But we have located, you know, growth areas through our comprehensive plan. And so maybe we will have larger, more large-scale units going in. I'm curious to hear what George thinks.
Yeah.
He's, you know, you have a long history in development.
Well, I think that, I think that we were kind of always chasing, you know, we're always a little bit behind.
Exactly.
You know?
Exactly.
The inclusionary was in, the economy went downhill, that goes out. Now we've had a boom, but keep in mind that insurance rates are going the other way now and likely not to be three percent ever again in any of our lifetimes, most likely. So that is sending us in another direction. And now we're talking about putting in more restriction. You know, to me, I wonder about this, and, you know, I've underlined where it says none of the twenty-three have been yet constructed. And why is that? Is that because they haven't followed through with planning and permitting to construct? Or are they having second thoughts about material costs and, and financing costs? And, you know, so I don't know. That, that seems to me to be a glaring number. And one other thing I, I want to mention, it's kind of bothered me for a number of years. And that is incentivizing by reducing or eliminating development fees. That's a burden on everybody that uses the schools, the parks, the sewer system, the water system. I mean, it, it's just transferring that to everybody else, which, you know, I don't know. I, I, I just have a problem. And I, I served on the salt sanitation board for fourteen years. And our concern was the sanitation, you know, system. And so that's what we concentrated on. Here, it's different because council controls all that. But when you give it to somebody, somebody else is paying, you know? So I kind of have a problem with that kind of incentive.
Well, I mean, it's, it's really just a matter of understanding what is the value, right? And trying to attribute tangible, you know, actual value to the number of, of deed restricted units that the developer is providing to us and then translating that value to incentives, right? That, that it becomes then a wash for, for everyone else. In that, we feel like we're getting ten thousand dollars worth of value that is to units. We are, we're, we're passing that value to the developer in, in a sense. So that for, for the rest of the town, we're not, we're not gaining anything, we're losing. But the developer then is incentivized and, and the town ultimately feels like they're giving that, that benefit, right?
At the burden of everybody else that uses all of the other thing.
Well.
I mean, it's, somebody's got to pay for it.
But the town feels like it's worth ten grand, right? Let's say, right? And so, and so that value, and I'm making up numbers, but it's that value, that ten grand, that the town feels like they are recouped in other ways, right? And so it would be the town then that takes the burden of the ten grand, not, not the rest of the population, not the, you know, everyone else. It would be the town saying, all right, what you're doing for us is worth ten thousand dollars. We're gonna make this work for you and for everyone else that, that are affected, day to day.
Try and understand, but.
Yeah. And I may not be explaining it the best way, but it's like, you know, you're not giving away the farm, right? For, for, you, you, you're very controlled in what those incentives are. So that it is as equitable as possible for the community. It's not provide, we're not, we're not providing an incentive for one only to burden others. That's not the right way. That's, that's counterproductive. That's not how we should do this. But it would be the incentive for one for the benefit of all in, in a sense. And, and it, and Hannah, that seems like a lot like, I'm, I'm kind of like not thrilled that we have to figure this out tonight. Can. You guys have been done, you know, a ton of work. This is like. It's important stuff that we're trying to hammer out tonight.
It's important stuff we're trying, thanks. We're trying to hammer out tonight. Is the answer seven? Is the answer eight?
I guess, I guess one thing for me that I'll kind of speak in. So, so I've, I've been doing this for twenty years. I did my first. Deed restriction maybe in, when we first were doing it, I did some deed restricted places. And they were for, they were for sale units and they were down at White Horse down here.
Yeah.
And, um. So I'm pretty familiar with Garfield County Housing. I think they do a good job.
Yeah.
Managing it. So for the management thing, from my perspective, I think they do a good job. And I've done projects where there were rents units as well and they keep track of eight, one, six, oh, one where you live. I mean. You know, it's tough to do, but I think they do a good job. So I think that's, to me, that's a different part than what this is asking for.
Yeah.
And, and, and so. You know, I, I, I guess a couple of things for me. One is, is I don't know what percentage of our overall housing, you know, we say we need two thousand units. That is, or do we want the developers to supply eighty percent, ninety percent? Fifty percent, you know, we have, um, RE one did the project in South Glenwood that I know I was part of. And we got units there. We did CMCs doing some units. I know it's not in the city. Habitats now doing units. We're getting some for sale units. We're getting, but maybe those are, that's a small number. So, so it would be interesting to me to see what, what's the percentage of, for our plan? Do, do we think development, developers are going to bring X amount? And then that's just kind of a general comment. But for me, I, if, you know, getting to your point. I guess I, I'm, I'm okay with, with going forward with this, but for me, it's two things. One is, is the for sale. I think the for sale unit should be the same. I, I think we shouldn't increase the percentage. And, and drop the number. That's, that's my own take. And then, and then I think, I, well, I think we shouldn't drop the number period. I think it should just stay ten. And, you know, what other, you know, could be said, let's say it's whatever, but I think just keep it simple. Just keep it ten.
Commissioner Waller, uh, to clarify, are you talking about the threshold or the percentage?
Yeah, no, no, the, the number ten. Don't, don't drop it. Don't, don't drop unit count to five. Keep the unit count at ten. So, so for the small people, I mean, to what, you know, several people have said, I mean, I think that, that, that makes sense to me. Because really, you know, you're talking about larger number here. You have a two thousand number, the onesie, twosies. You know, that helps you a little bit, but, but you're also trying to get housing that people have, hopefully you can get housing that people own. So they can reap the benefits of, of, of homeownership and, you know, as things get more, whatever. But I know that was one of the problems we had with the deed restriction that we did it before the great recession. It was before oh eight. When that happened, that was one of the issues because people got behind that owned. I don't know if you remember this or not Hannah, but, but they got. They got behind because the housing prices dropped so much that, that some, uh, there were some teachers that wanted to get out of their unit. And it was difficult for them to get out of the unit because they were stuck with what they could sell their unit at while the prices went down. So that was, had to figure that out, but, um. So, so I guess for, for me, there, there's two things. I would like to keep the, uh. Some, some incentive for, for sale units that, that that stays exactly. The same if a developer comes in for sale versus rental units. And then, and then the other way is, is just keep the, don't, don't drop the, the count down from ten to five. Just keep it at ten. Those are kind of my.
If I may paraphrase, so on the for sale project side, it would still be at the ten unit threshold. And then still be the ten percent affordability deed restriction.
Exactly.
Okay. Making that clear for the record. Thank you.
No, no, thank you. Thank you for helping me out. And then, and then the other would be keep, keep the ten for, for rent as well.
Which ten?
The, uh, the, the, the count, the unit count.
So somebody goes a tenplex.
Yeah, like, you know, some small person, Patrick Waller builds a. Just saying some, some small person and, you know, they have a little lot that they found that they can get.
I wonder if we could also maybe to staff's point, I mean, I know you guys did so much work on this. But, you know, looking at the number five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Like if somebody wanted to do something and they were a fiveplex and incentivize them somehow on some scale. To, so that they do, um, maybe want to add another unit that's like employee housing or deed restricted. I don't know, you know, have some sort of like.
Yep.
To, you know, just to kind of add to Joy's point about the sliding. I, I kind of like that idea in that, but somehow incentivize them to actually do it. You know what I mean?
Which we do have already. That's the inclusionary piece that we do have.
That's what that would be.
Yeah.
That's okay. Yeah.
Yep.
If they're, if they're under the ten.
Yep.
Then it is.
And they want to do something for.
Then they get that, right? They get that.
Voluntary.
It's voluntary.
Yancy Nickel doing something for his engineers, surplus engineering or.
Right.
STM or, you know, I mean, it seems like those are, those are groups that we want to try to. Incentivize to, to, to do projects where it's, um, business driven housing in, in, in some areas. I mean, it seems like that's been a good. Thing for us. It's worked, you know, but trying to make that happen. So that's a tough thing to.
So I mean, the housing authority and staff recommend twenty percent. So I guess if we're saying, you know, everybody here wants to still, it, it to remain at ten units. What would staff and the housing authority say back to us?
I think they all care.
Well, they did all that work.
It, it's going to go to council though. They're going to decide.
So, so in a sense, are we, are we just saying, keep the code as, as it?
Hey, I haven't gotten to talk yet.
Sorry.
Just a point of clarification and then to Commissioner Sipperly. Garfield County Housing Authority is not recommending anything. They are our consultant.
Okay.
The Housing Commission, which is a city board in commission, does have a memo with a recommendation in your packet.
Thank you for correcting me.
And thank you for tolerating my outburst, but I've been waiting.
She's been bitching.
Right. And I, uh, I, I really do think that we should be incentivizing for sale units. And I like what Pete said about, um, keeping the ten unit threshold for the for sale units. And I'm okay with upping the percentage for those larger developments, uh, upping the, um. Twenty to the twenty percent required housing. One thing that does really concern me is we have these twenty-three units coming online. We have zero experience with this. It has not been proven. We don't know what issues are going to come up. Are we be, are we rushing into this when we haven't got any certifiable results from our experiment that we just put in place a year ago? You know, we, we don't know if this is going to be easy to live with these units. We do know that Garfield County Housing Authority is, is competent and, uh, will do their job at this. Like the income threshold is, um, of great concern to me. And frankly, I think we should have the housing commission here with us, helping us make this important decision.
I like it.
So I'm, I'm not of the mind to approve it. I am more along the lines of continuance so that we get all the feedback we need. I, I mean, I, I think it's a, a very decent proposal, so I'm not inclined to deny it, which leaves us. With continuance and getting a little more information and maybe continuing until some of these units do come online, are rented and we see what, um, concerns we might have. What, can't we make that, uh, a condition to our approval? Is that, that council works with the housing commission to come up with rules that. I mean, it doesn't seem like we need those rules to predicate, predicate our decision on, on the code change. And I would just reiterate, everything that you said is exactly what I'd like to see is keep the threshold at ten, increase the percentage. And then I love the incentive for the, for, um, for sale housing, just because we talk a lot about diverse housing. And I think that, um, the for sale units really help with that comprehensive plan goal that we have. Um, I think also the, um, keeping the threshold at ten units also accomplishes that goal as well. Because again, we, we see such an influx of these multi, these huge developments. Keep, if we, um, lower the threshold to five, I feel like we are going to discourage. That smaller, more quaint style of housing that is a diverse home. And so Glenwood character. Yeah, exactly. So I, I, I don't know how we would do that Hannah, but could we, if we decide to approve this? Could we somehow make a recommendation that, um, maybe the housing guidelines? Or the rental guidelines come back to us for approval or something like that? I'd also like to ask staff if there's any way to beef up the carrot incentives. For developers and for the voluntary program. I mean, uh. I know there's a way to buy out of the deed restricted program with a, the overtime sort of thing, but, um. Maybe there's some other, uh, you know, building code variances would not be required or setbacks can be modified along the lines of. The, um, the site plan incentives that are already in place. Like maybe we can further incentivize developers to do the voluntary housing.
So before there are too many questions and I can't keep track.
The condition to come back.
So what's before you tonight is really two action items. And, uh, I think staff understands this is part of a larger program that is in existence today. The only two action items before you are for the threshold and the percentage. And you've made incredible comments, valid comments on the rest of the program. That are worth review. And I do believe that city council, when they adopted the inclusionary zoning program, had that same intent. And it has always been that intent. We just haven't done it yet because as you put, Commissioner Sipperly. Um, none of the units have come online yet. But the two items before you from council, council directed changes. Came out more from a timeline perspective. So I think the possibility of editing this program will always be here. It's iterative. And a living document and staff does have plans to review those further. There are some items from city council specifically that they wanted reviewed at a later date. And we've been waiting for the units to come online, which is not out of a delay of any sort. It is literally a six month entitlement period and then usually another six months to get out of the ground. So we're just at the point that those units are coming out of the ground. They're not online yet because they're not finished and so they can't have tenants, just to answer that question of. Why do we not have any that are up and running yet? So we, you can certainly make recommendations on this program. You could make your decision on these two action items. Approve, deny, or continue for more information. Um, if you do decide to make a recommendation to council, you could, um, take action on the two items. With strong recommendations for review in other areas that you have mentioned. Staff would pull that forward. I do believe city council is of the same mind. There are aspects of the program that do need additional review. Think that answered your question and you could also make a recommendation for review of the voluntary program components at the same time. As they're all, um, housed within the housing guidelines document that we're discussing.
So we could take one of our action items, say the, the unit threshold and divide it into for sale and for rent and still move the thing ahead. Okay.
Well, are we? Ready to move to a motion?
Just for clarity's sake for you guys, you could also decide to move one of these forward and not both or vice versa?
We can, we'll make it. I'll start off with trying to make a motion. So I don't know. It may not work. Um, I'll make a motion to. To approve, um, or I'll say approved. Consideration of code revisions, of code section oh, seven, oh, oh, four, five, oh, seven, oh. Um, with the findings on page five. Um, with the exceptions of, um, keeping. Both the count number and the percent of, um. Yeah, of affordable housing required the same for for sale units. And overall not dropping the, the number of units down from ten to five, keeping the number of units at ten.
Or for sale.
For everything, for both for sale or for rent, for small projects to keep it. So.
And what percentage?
And, 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 but the percentages there would be, um, well, the percentage would be twenty percent. So, so the percentage is, is twenty percent. And then there's no drop down of, of from, from ten to five.
And the percentage is twenty percent for?
Oh, twenty percent for rental and, 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 and ten percent for sale. Thank you, ladies.
So I don't know, from a legal standpoint, I mean, we're asked to consider this. We're, we're really denying that and then making another.
Yeah, but we're like.
Recommendation.
Yeah, or recommendation.
So we're going to. Make our own motion. Make our own criteria.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of making it.
Motion with amendment.
Instead, yeah, a motion with amendment. So, so changing the findings. I added two new findings.
What about the, it does have a statement in there, mixed use development?
Well, I'm just keeping it, but, 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 that, that's my, that's my motion, adding those two findings to it.
Which are?
Which were the, the one for the for sale, for sale units, no change is made on those at the ten percent. Of, of the number of units overall and, 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 and the count overall does not change from. The, um, does not change below ten.
So these.
Ten units.
The proposed changes would only apply to for rent units.
Yes.
So what, so what are the changes that you're proposing?
Okay, I got it.
So should we make that two? Two motions? One. Dealing with keeping the ten units for sale.
Well, I was dumping it all into one, but if you want to do.
Well, I'm wondering if.
Illegal?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't think legal matters so much because, because it's going to council anyway.
But we're saying.
It's going to council anyway.
Yeah, this is a recommendation. So I think staff is clear. I've written down what you have as far as what you're meaning. And I'm happy to reiterate that from my perspective, I'm getting nods.
That's probably good to do.
Yes, so if I may, um, so the motion as it stands is to recommend maintaining. Current requirements of ten unit threshold and ten percent cost affordability deed restriction.
Twenty percent.
No?
Nope.
She's saying it right.
Oh, she is? Okay.
Maintain current requirements of a ten unit threshold and ten percent on the affordable deed restriction requirement. For for sale projects. And then the next is, um. For rental projects, a ten unit threshold with twenty percent of units required to be. Affordably deed restricted.
Yes, correct. Good job.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, great.
So that was the motion.
Yeah, that's good.
I will.
That's the motions and, and these findings are.
And those findings are good.
Fine.
Yeah.
Fine. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion.
Should we discuss?
Commissioner Waller. And the second. Commissioner White.
With, with Hannah.
And.
That was good.
Any further discussion? Anybody turns on one of those lights?
So I just want, so for, so for rentals, ten unit threshold and then twenty percent of units. So.
Yeah.
So I could build, I could build nine units. With no API, no deed restrictions. Once I go to that tenth unit, now two of my units must be.
Correct.
Deed restricted. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any, okay, we'll call the question. Empty seat didn't. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. There we have it. The motion passes.
Passed unanimously, six to zero. Thank you for the hard work on that one. Staff is noting the recommendations that you've made on the program in other areas. And will certainly take that into consideration as we're working on the program as well as with our consultant that we've hired. Through a grant, um, to look at some of these components as well. And you will be involved in that process a little bit later on when they're, um, doing public engagement.
I mean, if you look at, sorry, what's happening in Aspen, and I don't mean to say that word out loud in front of Pete, but.
I know.
But, um, I, I, I mean, yeah, it definitely needs, it needs to have. You know, it needs to be tightened up so that it doesn't just become chaos, like they're having and they think they're tight.
I have a lot of faith in the, um, Housing Commission and the work that they're doing. Um, but we're being asked to sort of do slightly higher level work and I think it, it would be important for us to read the housing plan. And perhaps have more conversations with the Housing Commission as these type of questions come up.
I agree with, with Carolyn on that, it, it's surprising, because I mean, I know a bunch of those people and they're very good. That, 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 none of them are here, because, because it would have been good to have this conversation. And to hear some, and, and I think you, you're probably on that group, but, but, um, it would have been good to have. You know, a couple of them here anyway to, it's almost like, needs more of like a, a working session environment. Cause that was for us, it was kind of like that.
Are these are final comments? No, discussion. Okay, I just would like to, um, acknowledge what George said, which is. That we are always kind of working behind the eight ball. However, I commend staff and City Council who, um, were just mindful of the. The housing challenges before all these projects went in and we did get some good affordable housing. Before the, the big year, so, um, and then I would also just like to say that. You guys are reacting to, uh, you know, housing crisis that we're seeing currently. And so it seems to me that you're always willing to be malleable with the conditions in our town. And so if all of a sudden we're finding that, you know, these units are being filled for some miraculous reason. I know that, um, council and staff will work together to adjust. The numbers that we have in place or that we've recommended, so.
I think, I think that's a really important comment, because you know what happened with, after the Great Recession or whatever the hell that was called in oh eight, the oh shit. But, but was that, um, you know, we went to the extreme, so how, how do we, how do we build, um. Flexibility and when economic times are bad and, you know, who knows, maybe it goes down and you start getting behind the eight ball, how do you get it? How do we stay in front of it versus, um. A new regime comes in and it gets voted out and then we're starting over again, which is kind of what happened, that kind, that is what happened. This time totally, here, and, and you know, that's tough, because whenever a new regime comes in, I, I totally agree with what you said. Let's don't talk about that.
Another thing we just did today is try to, um. Kind of help our community by, in a way, encouraging smaller developments and less giant developments, which are often from out of town investors. So I think, um, we've served our community well today.
Okay, uh, Commissioner comments, Mitchell.
Only one, uh, Watkins, earlier I said, we're not there yet. I, I didn't mean the work that you had done, I meant like this big matzo ball that we're trying to figure out, right? We're not there yet, um, but, but I think you did, you did great on the, on your work in getting that in front of us tonight, so. I didn't, I wanted to clarify that, so thank you.
You guys did a great job too with your discussion, you don't often get into the weeds like this on these kind of broader, more legislative type issues. Good job.
I've said enough, Merry Christmas.
No, I think I've pretty much made all my opinions clear, um, this time and, and over the past. And I did, um, renew my application to get another term on P and Z, so. Um, I can't believe it's been four years. I've learned so much and I feel so much more involved in my community and in a position to help and, uh, I just hope. That our actions here in, inspire other people to get more involved and just learn what we're doing here. And, um, take some action and come join us down here in council chamber sometime.
Well, happy holidays, everyone, and thank you so much, staff, for doing that. I totally agree with you, Carolyn. It's been such a great learning experience for me as well and it's really refreshing to have so much knowledge that's already existing on the P and Z. And, um, I really enjoy the discourse and then coming to, um. You know, just a really great way for our community to be successful. Particularly with, you know, housing, the way it is and the way it stands as, you know, right now and it's nice to have different perspectives from. All these different, uh, areas that people work in this community, so it's really great. Thank you so much, you guys, for putting up with me and I, I'll, I'll try not to say Aspen anymore.
Really no comments other than what's, what's happening with your bosses?
So City Council did put out, we have a press release on the next round of city manager candidates, if that's what you're asking about. Um, and they will be having a community engagement interview like they did at the last round, I believe that is scheduled for. January fifth, perhaps, need to double check on that, at the community center again where. Community members are encouraged to interact with the three finalist candidates that City Council has selected there.
Next meeting.
Yes, we have one, um, so a couple of things for you guys as you're both Steering Committee and Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we have a work session with Steering Committee, Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, that is all of you. Um, as well, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, even if you haven't been at, um, the Steering Committee meetings this entire time. This is a work session between Planning and Zoning Commission and the Steering Committee and City Council. That will be on January fifth, um, time is TBD, it's during work session time, so it'll either be in the morning. Or in the afternoon, um, I think we have some comments back that you had sent to Danielle on people that weren't going to be in town. Which is great, but anyone is, who's in town, we do need more Planning and Zoning Commissioners to attend that work session.
So afternoon could work for me, morning does not.
Okay.
Are they gonna send out another revision of the, um, the proposed comp plan for review before that meeting?
I thought she sent it out.
She did. Okay, so not the one that happened before, we had our other. You just highlight this.
Our regular meeting, do we have?
So there's the January fifth work session, um, and that leads into your regularly scheduled January meeting, which is January twenty-fourth. In which the comprehensive plan is coming to you for the first adoption meeting. That is why that work session is important. So that is one of the agenda items and we have, uh, a location and extent. Um, for Two Rivers Community School that will also be on the agenda, uh, those two items will take up a full meeting, I expect.
What time on the fifth?
I will confirm, um, with City Council, um, if there is a preference from you, we might, I think last time it was in the afternoon. I'm guessing that's when they would have it again, around the four PM mark, but I will confirm with. The executive assistant who keeps the work session schedule.
She said like ten thirty or something like. I couldn't make ten thirty, but I could make an afternoon, I'm just throwing out.
I'm hearing a preference for afternoon or that would be easier to attend, that doesn't mean you have to, but. Um, if that's going to get more people there, then it's definitely a consideration.
So what is the process then of, um, the adoption of the comp plan? What are the steps?
So the next steps for the comp plan is the work session and then our very first public hearing for possible adoption with you on January twenty-fourth. Like any of your applications, you have the opportunity to recommend approval. Uh, denial, approval with conditions or a continuance.
So after that one, one meeting on the twenty-fourth. Then we potentially send it to council.
Yes.
Once as P and Z.
That is correct. It is, both of the P and Z and City Council are public hearings, so they will be published and for this item, there's quite a bit more. Um, public engagement that's been a part of this process, as you guys are all very familiar, so we're sending out updates through those website channels of people that have signed up. For information, so, um, that will be a widespread, um, also from our Public Information Officer, letting people know of those public hearings.
So, so, so that's an interesting thing, because the comp plan is massive. And so, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, the public being here and there's lots of thoughts and, um, so. And, and, and I know that you or Danielle will guide us through or whomever that is, it guides us through that. But, um, cause we could be getting diverse things from all over the place and we could, you know, just like always, just say, well, thank you very much and. Blow them off or.
I think, I think what I'll remind you of, of this particular, let's call it a project. Um, is unique in the fact of how it's been rolled out. We've been doing this, you guys have been doing this for over a year. Or just about a year and the engagement with the public has been immense. Multiple meetings, different surveys, we have a survey that will be going out tomorrow, our last public survey. So we have made sure that the public has been with us this entire time. Hopefully what that translates into is a lot of, um, you know, it's, it, I don't expect it to be an angry mob that shows up for the comp plan. Um, because they've been involved, they know, they've read the drafts, they've seen the recommendations. And so that's, that's a lot more engagement than any project outside of this process usually gets, just as a, as a. A point.
But it's, but, I mean, for us, it's the same kind of thing, so we'll listen to. Danielle's or whomever's presentation.
That would be your old friend, Jim Hardcastle.
Okay, all right. So, so, so Jim and then, but it's, it's, it's the same kind of thing, the public comment and then, and then, and then we'll make our recommendation to City Council. And then it goes to City Council.
Yes, yes, that is the process.
And hopefully it's just going to be a lot of like head nodding, like yes, this is all we've been hearing. Agreeing on all these things.
And I asked, so on the fifth though, we'll kind of hash it out, all of us. So that on the twenty-fourth, we're not like. Right, I mean, we've all been kind of following along, we've been reading all the inter, different iterations that they've been doing and. So I guess that's.
Yeah, it's definitely a conversation between the three bodies to kind of discuss.
Okay.
Feelings, if you will, on, on the product before it comes to a public hearing.
Okay, that's, that'll be super helpful, I think that's actually, but then we cannot watch any of yours then.
Page one. It's like, you've had a chance to read it, any questions?
And, and we will try to get that packet out to you, um, as early as possible with those two. It's a lot of reading, so.
A lot of us.
Plan that weekend.
Going to be different than, much different than what we just.
But they highlight the things that have changed from the last version we saw.
They absolutely can and that is a plan, yes.
Cause reading the whole, you know, huge document.
She's even saying that from. For the fifth, that would be good, is that, I haven't really looked at the document yet, but is, 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 is it highlighted of what things changed from what was. Before the last Steering Committee, P and Z meeting, remember there's.
I can certainly have a conversation with Danielle to make some of those, we have the higher level. Changes from twenty-eleven comp plan to now, um, but that's a good, I'll take that under advisement.
Each time, I mean, like to Carolyn's point is, you know, do I read through all? Like seventy pages or whatever and then there's a hundred pages of appendix or whatever.
We can certainly make that available.
After reading a document so many times, you begin to not see the nuances of it.
Uh, and then my last comment as director. Acting Director, that is, um, I just want to keep you guys informed. That the landscaping code changes that you discussed eons ago. Will be going to City Council for their review on. January fifth.
I just remember the burn or no, the.
My apologies, I got that date wrong, there's too many dates in my head, that's actually on Thursday.
I remember everything you said about the wall, the wall, the wall.
When do they make a decision on your job? Your acting.
Currently I'm acting director, um, some of the director positions that are open with the city are being held until we have a new city manager, I believe. The position being posted, um, I believe they are waiting until, uh, further along in the city manager search.
So are they splitting Jen's job up then? From, cause she's assistants, was assistant city manager and.
I can neither confirm nor deny, uh, the future plans of this position, thank you.
Okay, well, um, I would like to bid a fond farewell to Jen. And wish her well in her new adventure in Aspen. Is it City of Aspen or Pitt King County she's with?
City of Aspen.
City of Aspen. And, um. And thank her for all of her wonderful contributions to us, she's done a great job. And, uh, wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope your candles burn eight days and many more. And, yeah, and we're adjourned.